Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for November 9th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with guidelines established by the Governor. All persons in attendance are required to wear a mask whether they've been vaccinated or not, and as always, I suggest for folks to get good, accurate information regarding the vaccines. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order, two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order. We do have confirmation of the posting of the agenda. All council members except Councilmember Jorgensen are in chambers, and Councilmember Jorgensen will be participating via telephone today. With that, we'll begin with the invocation. Pastor Barbie, if you'd like to begin, everyone rise.
Would you bow your head with the praise in just a moment, a prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity, as we pray for our City Council. We pray for wisdom for our Mayor. Wisdom for the members of the City Council and the staff that work here on a daily basis. We pray for our community, for protection for our police, for our firefighters, for the first responders and the healthcare workers. We pray for the businesses of our community, as well as the churches that have been established to be a spiritual beacon and a ray of hope for the citizens of Boulder City. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you Pastor Barbie, appreciate your words this evening. Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Then please come forward.
My name is Glenn Phan, good evening Mayor and Council. I just want to make a small announcement, this coming Thursday is Veterans Day, the 11th of November. The American Legion Post 31 here in Boulder City is, we're gonna have a small open house, we're inviting Boulder City veterans to stop by, we're at 1641 Boulder Parkway, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we're gonna have some light refreshments, some beverages as such. So any veterans out there, haven't got anything to do on Veterans Day, stop by and say hi. Thank you, again, that's 1641 Boulder Parkway, thank you.
What was the time again, Mr. Phan?
From 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Eight to two, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll proceed then to open our initial public comment period. Public comment during this period is limited to those items for action on the agenda. Each person speaking during public comment will have up to five minutes. As always, we ask you to be civil and concise. Is there anyone here in chambers that would like to speak in public comment? Mr. Shane, please come forward.
Sorry about that, my left foot didn't want to cooperate with me. Judy DeShane, my comments, one has to do with item number three, and I realize that's just a bill that you guys will introduce and won't really be discussed until the next meeting, but I would like to just throw it out there to let you know, I'd be in favor of the commercial, either the CM or the C1, those being allowed for funeral homes. I'm not happy about the R1 zones being wide open, I think that in the future could possibly cause us a problem, but definitely, I think we should make some adjustments, and we should also maybe look at the things that are currently R1 that really shouldn't be. I can only assume that when that mausoleum was built, that was not a residential. Sometime after that, somebody got it changed to residential, and we just never ever should allow that type of thing to go on. If, once a building is built under certain codes, there is absolutely no reason we should change the rules afterwards, no matter who owns it or why. So that's my comments on the item number three. And then there was item number five, that had to do with the changing the meeting times to 5:00, and I was very much in favor of that, the last time it came up, but there was something, I believe it was Councilwoman Bridges, that had brought up that 5:00 was not good because of some kind, one of the committees our council people sit on, it conflicts with that, it's very hard for the person that's assigned to that committee to get back here for the meeting at 5:00. So you may want to look at that, or maybe that committee meeting has changed, but I just wanted to remind you of that. And, oh, and then this is just a capital improvement one. I don't, maybe it's just me that I just didn't, haven't really realized so many of the things that are on there, I know they've been on there a couple of years, and so I am just assuming they were not actually for the year that they, when they first showed up on there, and they were out there, because it seems like, like the trees on the Boulder City Parkway, and the irrigation and that, seems like that stuff has been out there for two or three years now, so I'm assuming it's just now coming up that we're actually gonna do something. So I'd appreciate some information on that as you guys go through and hear that this evening. I think that's about it, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Ainsworth Hunt, I don't know if you can hear me with this mask on, but I'm here about Agenda Item 3. The reason that I'm here is, is that the R1 is quite objectionable, I see no reason that we should change residential zoning for any reason. I have no problem with the vagaries between C1 and C2 in terms of usage for a mortuary or a funeral home. There are a lot of, there's devils in the details with this, there are a lot of buildings in Boulder City that are zoned incorrectly. 1404 Colorado Street comes to mind, it's zoned as a C1 building. It's actually C2ed by definition, since the height of the building is incongruent with the rules for C1. 551 Adams Street is zoned residentially, there's a business there. The mausoleum there should be taxed as a business, we should not be subsidizing the pom mortuary or pom mausoleum in any way, shape, or form, it's just wrong. I could go on, but these are just a couple of details, and they do appertain to the reason for the bill in Agenda Item 3. The reason that the funeral home is looking for these changes, as far as I understand it, is that he's unable to find space that has adequate parking, has facilities that suit the needs of his business, and that if these buildings were zoned correctly, he might be able to purchase them without having a lot of headaches. The simple fact of the matter is, I believe his business is good for the city, and is an asset to the community. I am very much in favor of supporting his business, I am not in favor of changing residential zoning for any reason at all. So that may sound like I'm a little mixed up and a little confused, but I'm really not talking out of both sides of my mouth. The residential zoning, if changed, could lead to problems for every residence in the city of Boulder City, and diminish property values throughout the town. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name.
Good evening, Chelsea Shapman, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for serving the community. I am here in favor of the mortuary business, and was disappointed that they did not get the variance for the Colorado building. I am in agreement with the C1, and for them to have that location. The R1 is, I'm looking forward to hearing why we would do that, as a Realtor, and doing business in the downtown area, and visiting other areas and other communities, I don't see an issue with the Colorado location for the mortuary, I do support that in behalf of the veterans as well. There are dozens of families last year that could not have service within that establishment because there wasn't space, so I look forward to them having a better space to serve the community, the veterans, their families, and honoring their loved ones. And I am here because this was announced at Boulder Business Development, and we had a discussion about being very much in favor of that business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, is this okay? I'm short. Hello, my name is Nancy Deneen, I live at 1415 Denver Street, and I'm here this evening to speak to you about my concerns regarding Tyson Smith expanding his mortuary business to the building located at 1404 Colorado Street. It has come to light that this property is already an escrow. That would lead one to assume that Tyson is not considering any other viable buildings and/or lots that are already zoned for his needs. Several suggestions have been made to Tyson for other locations, and all are quickly rejected by him. The issue is, he is willing to overlook the fact that the current zoning does not allow him to have his dream location. The residents that live next to and overlooking this building are currently protected by zoning restrictions. The reason these zones are in place are to protect the homeowners and the historical district of Boulder City. It's curious that Tyson would move forward, and he clearly thinks he will have no issue with zone changes, with the help of Susan in planning and the City Council. The residents deserve to be heard, and should be able to rely on existing zoning regulations, and their elected officials who are here to represent us. It is incomprehensible that zoning would be changed for one man and one business. The doors that would open for other businesses to ask this city to change zoning to fit their needs should be considered and addressed. I respectfully request that if the decision is made tonight to continue this discussion, it is done after the holidays. Planning a vote just two days before Thanksgiving is inconsiderate to the residents who wish to be heard about decisions affecting the future of this community. Finally, a mortuary columbarium crematorium needs to be where zoning allows for it. The building at 1404 Colorado Street is zoned for office space. The real estate company holding this listing is a competent one, and very, and they need to actively market it to businesses that fit the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Mary Ann Ray, and I live at 1408 Denver Street, where my husband and I have lived for 25-plus years. I want to address AM 21356, Resolution Number 1207, Tyson Smith and the proposed amendment to allow funeral homes and mortuaries as a conditional use in the R1 single-family residential and C1 neighborhood commercial zones. I find it unbelievable that the Planning Department of Boulder City would even present such a proposal. At their last meeting, the Planning Commission voted six to one against the proposed amendment. At that meeting, it became obvious that the Planning Department failed to do due diligence before going forward with a proposed amendment that benefits only one individual and one business. Fact one, text amendments are not transparent, and I quote from PAS Report 115, American Society of Planning Officials, "Because text amendments change the restrictions for all properties in that zoning district, such amendments are relatively rare." I have here with me Tyson Smith zoning application form, on the back of the form, there is a section, and it says, "Planning Commission, Date notices mailed, not applicable, distance requirement, zero." The same holds true for City Council. In other words, even though this proposed amendment could impact almost everyone in Boulder City, it was not deemed necessary to send out any notification. This is lack of transparency. Fact two, it became evident that no one, including the city attorney, was aware that under Nevada law, funeral homes, mortuaries can have crematoriums. Director May stated that cremations would not be permitted within the city zoning code. I do believe state code supersedes local ones. If, if anyone would care to read it, I have an article about the crematorium next to my home. The quote I found most applicable to what is and could happen here in Boulder City is, quote, "You might wonder why there was no opposition from residents at the planning and zoning meeting. The answer is simple, no one told us about this, we had to read about it in the local paper." Fact three, all of our research, which has been extensive, concludes that funeral homes and mortuaries adversely impact the surrounding property. Again, I quote, "Being in close proximity to funeral homes are associated with drops in property values." It seems that the Planning Department was either unaware of this consequence, or just did not care. Fact four, the documentation about people not wanting to live next to a funeral home mortuary is overwhelming, and incidentally, a lot of this came from funeral directors. Quote, "There is no justification or excuse for it seeking out and establishing itself in localities devoted to homes, where it not only materially detracts from the comfort and happiness of those who dwell there, but ruinously depreciates the values of their real estate as well." Fact four, from Federal Homes, American Planning Association, quote, "For one thing, the funeral home because of its nature generates a great deal of local traffic. Again, the Planning Department chose not to take the latter into consideration. Over a year and a half ago, the City Council turned down a proposal by Tyson Smith to put a funeral home in the office building," and I say "office building" because it is, it's over 24,000 square feet of offices at 1404 Colorado Street. This proposed amendment is far more sweeping, in essence giving funeral homes and mortuaries one business carte blanche when it comes to location, and the perhaps unintended consequences. This opens up these areas to any mortuary funeral home who might decide that they would like to come and to Boulder City and put their business here. My question to each of you, the members of the City Council, is since when does one person, one business, have the right to enact changes within the city that can have so many negative impacts? I would, I also concur, if this goes forward, I would like to see it in now, but if it goes forward, please have it till after the holidays, when people can respond. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak?
Good evening Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Tracy Sable, and I'm a resident of Boulder City, and I'm tall, not so tall anymore. First off, I was requesting, as a lot of the other people have, to see if we could extend this, and how, you know, finalize it next year, so everybody can have an opportunity. This will give the residents who are immediately affected time to compile photos and letters from the industry leaders on the impact this would have on the surrounding area, and it will also give the community of Boulder City the opportunity to realize that these changes will affect all of the zoning, not just the zoning for this property. When Tyson originally applied to the council to amend the zoning text, he stated that there were multiple locations that he was considering. The property on 1404 Colorado must have been the one he had in mind. These changes that are being considered to amend the text to include all properties opens up all kinds of possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, sorry. If I'm not mistaken, doesn't the veterans cemetery have their own crematorium? Um, columbarium? Uh huh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Charles Williams, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I would like to speak this evening in favor of considering Tyson's request to have a funeral home at the proposed location. I think all of us here would agree and know that he is an upstanding individual, we need a service such as his, and I feel he would be an asset to our community. As a member of the Boulder Business Development Group, which includes approximately 30 members, businesspeople here in this town, in discussion previous to today, we support his request to have his funeral home at this location. So I would be in favor of you considering moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Bruce Smith, I live at 1340 Colorado Street. I was born here, my father worked for the government and acquired enough points in 1955 to move into 1340 Colorado Street. He was a WWII veteran, he worked for the DM for 40 years, and he had a family. Later in 59, or 58, the government offered him to buy the house, so he bought it then, and he's, they're passed on, but I live there now. I don't like the idea of my property value going down. I don't see where this guy is coming from. He reminds me of another Smith, which I'm a Smith, Curly Smith. Probably nobody remembers him, and kind of the same mentality. So anyway, I just want to say that I've lived there all my life, and I don't want my property taxes going down, I don't want the traffic, I just want a nice quiet street on Colorado Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? All right, we will take any phone calls, anyone wishing to call in, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is the initial public comment period for City Council meeting, anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to make comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
This is Linda Barnett.
Go ahead.
I thank you.
And this is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to make comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
I'd like to comment on Agenda Item Number 3. This Agenda Item is not a popularity contest, or a validation of a person or a business. This is a sobering outcry from the residents of Boulder City who will be impacted by a change if this goes through, and are pleading. This is Linda Barnett. I thank you.
And this is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to make comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Ms. Barnett, you may want to turn down whatever your computer, or whatever you're watching this on.
This Agenda Item is not a popularity contest, or a validation of a person or a business. This is a sobering outcry from the residents of Boulder City who will be impacted by a change if this goes through, and are pleading. This is Linda Barnett. Oh, hi, shall I finish?
Ms. Barnett, can you turn down whatever?
Okay, let's, I'll pick it up. Okay. So, as I was saying, this is a sobering outcry from the residents of Boulder City who will be impacted by any change here, and they are pleading not to allow a funeral home, a mortuary, or any other inappropriate commercial venture as a conditional use in R-one or C-one neighborhoods. Interestingly, there are some on council who were extremely worried and verbal about having affordable housing going up near their neighborhood around Boulder Creek Golf Course. Will these same council members now turn a deaf ear to residents who are crying out not to grant a conditional use for R-one and C-one zoning, which would literally put a funeral home in their front or backyards? We shall see. Let's remember, this is not Atlanta, Chicago, or New York City. This is historic Boulder City. That's what folks love and bought into, just the way it is now. And that's what we must continue to preserve and keep intact for present residents who are crying out to you guys and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if anyone wishes to call in for public comment, the line is now available, the phone The phone line is available for public comment, the phone number is seven zero two five Madam City Clerk, do we have comments submitted via email?
Yes.
If you'd like to go ahead with those.
Thank you. First comment states, altering Title XI, Chapter Three and Ten of the city codes would not be conducive to the residential community in Boulder City. Items as crucial as changing city code could have consequences and therefore should be voted by the residents of Boulder City before any changes are made. Thank you, Janet Bateman. The next states, good morning, I cannot be physically present for tomorrow's city council meeting, please accept this email as I voice my opinion. I am against the amendment to change R-one and C-one zoning. I believe there can be a more appropriate location for a mortuary columbarium, crematorium in Boulder City. Thank you for your time, Mary Croco. The next comment, I wanted to reach out and provide some feedback regarding the rezoning for the allowance of a mortuary on Colorado. My husband and I are in the process of building our forever home right behind the proposed morgue and wanted to voice our concerns. If there were any business one would imagine is quiet and potentially acceptable, I guess a morgue would be it. However, our concern is the required rezoning and ultimate impact to the residential area overall. This is why we are not in favor of it. With that said, we stand with the majority of surrounding residents who are not in favor of this rezoning. We thank you for your time. Please let us know if there is anything you need from us. Best regards, Laura Diamore. Next comment, I support the idea of altering Title XI, Chapters Three and Ten of the city codes to allow funeral homes, mortuaries as a conditional use in the R-one, single-family residential, and C-one neighborhood commercial zones. There is a benefit to the community in Boulder City of having this. Tyson took such good care of our two family members, I can't imagine taking them to another city for their final care. It is also good to keep the tax review here in Boulder City. Signed, Diana M. My name is Jessica Frump, and I live down the street from where the crematorium is being considered for business. From what I understand, Tyson Smith may have prematurely purchased the building, but a large majority of folks in town are adamantly opposed to him operating his business in a residential area. I think what Tyson does is wonderful, but he needs to find an appropriate place to do it that is not in our neighborhood. I am fully supportive of Tyson operating his business in the industrial area. For now, he should consider purchasing a larger vehicle so he doesn't need to do so many trips a day into Henderson and back. I understand his concern is the aesthetics of the building, surrounding areas, satisfying families with loved ones who have passed away. But the locals living next door and down the street would be pretty irritated if his business were in our backyard. That industry is lucrative, he should invest smarter, buy elsewhere, so he doesn't need to work so hard to convince people of something they are sure they don't want in the neighborhood. This project has already been opposed to once. There is an army of us who will happily fight it again. Good luck, Jessica. Next comment, my remarks have nothing to do with the applicant. These remarks are not about his personality, work ethic, or his postings on Facebook. I've reached out to Mr. Smith to help him find a property that he feels could work for his business. It is nice to have a funeral home here in Boulder City, and I hope that he finds a location that does not require changing the city code. During my discussion with Mr. Smith, we talked about his first choice, the property located at fourteen oh four Colorado, Zone C-one. Mr. Smith is aware the credit unit accepted an offer on the property, and it is in contract. We also discussed his desire to purchase five fifty-one Adams, Zoned R-one, but the owners are unwilling to sell. Therefore, the two properties he is interested in are not available at this time. Why is it necessary to make a blanket change to R-one and C-one? Usually, the property owner will ask for conditional changes for the existing property or a property they contemplate purchasing. There are numerous vacant commercial properties in Boulder City that have ample parking for such a business. I see no need to change R-one or C-one when other places are available without changing the zoning. I spoke with Mr. Mays a few weeks ago. I asked if the council passes if it would allow funeral homes, mortuaries to be located within any area of the city. Would the girl streets, horse streets, Lake Mead View Estates, or any other properties within the city be affected? His answer was yes. The next question, most HOA and CCNRs prohibit businesses. Would the city allow a business to locate in that area? His answer was yes. The HOA would have to enforce the CCNRs. As a former president of an HOA for sixteen years, this amendment would be a massive hurdle for all HOAs. Controversies such as this require the Nevada Real Estate Division to become involved and hundreds of thousands of dollars expended with litigation which could bankrupt the association. I spoke with our management company, and they confirmed that the CCNRs are the lowest document to be considered than the city, state, and federal. In other words, our CCNRs would probably not be able to be enforced. For the city to be transparent in making such a profound change to zoning, especially in residential areas, the city should have posted this change in the local papers. The city should have notified the property owners of the proposed changes. This change affects all of Boulder City, especially the R-one properties. It affects all members of the city council. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of this proposed bill and the severity of this decision. It is probably one of the most crucial decisions the council will make. Changing the zoning for R-one to allow a business with the residential area is not acceptable. What's to keep other companies from wanting to locate in residential areas as well? Can we discriminate and not allow others? I urge the council not to introduce or approve Bill Number nineteen oh nine, signed Judith To the city council, with regard to Bill nineteen oh nine, conditional use in the R-one single-family residential and C-one neighborhood commercial zones, I respectfully request that you follow the guidance from the Planning Commission and not allow this proposal to be brought up for consideration, and if it is, to then vote no on the proposal. There is no specific parcel or property address listed in the conditional proposal to change the code for R-one residential zoning. Why is this being proposed as an open-ended change to the code for R-one residential areas? Most think the proposal is about fourteen oh four Colorado Street, but nowhere in the proposal is that property or parcel listed. Again, this is a wide-open request for any property or parcel in the R-one residential areas. In most cities and counties, this type of change would require a vote by all residents. What is even more concerning is the matter on which the proposal came to light. Again, since the proposal has no property or parcel listed, the city should have notified all residents that this was being considered. Rather, it was a few individuals that reviewed the Planning Commission agenda and uncovered this potential impactful request. If considered and approved by the council, this would then set a precedence to allow others to submit a conditional use proposal to open up any kind of business within the R-one residential zone, any business by anyone in any residential area of Boulder City. Signed, Mary Hoskins. To whom it may concern, it is my understanding that a vote will be made regarding a gross rezoning of certain properties in Boulder City. Since I own my home within the city and also rental units, I ask that this statement be read in its entirety at tonight's meeting. My background includes twenty years as a real estate broker, additionally, a career as a financial advisor for a major well-known firm, and a contracts negotiator for one of the largest contractors in the world. To wit, one, why is the city considering a blanket rezoning affecting the majority of its citizens to benefit a single user? A single-property zoning request would be prudent and reasonable. The solution proposed is a needless gross infringement on all property owners throughout the city. On its face, it makes absolutely no sense to even consider, no less propose such an egregious action potentially affecting a large swath of ownership. It seems it could be interpreted as gross abuse of government power for the benefit of one. Two, the Planning Commission already firmly rejected this proposal, which could affect property, homeowners' association, and individuals throughout the city. The law of unintended consequences could be in play for years to come, all for what reason. A more specific approach seems prudent and reasonable. Three, not being able to speak to the motivation for even proposing this improper and illogical request to change zoning affecting many, many citizens, I would just suggest the reason may lie in a short-term solution for the sake of expediency usually resulting in disaster. Four, I respectfully ask all my fellow Boulder City residents to oppose this rezoning in its entirety. Also, I ask the city council to deny passage on this item and to consider being proactive in our long-term zoning requirements, rather than being reactive to bad ideas for expediency to the detriment of our citizenry. The tail should never wag the dog. Thank you for listening to my opinions. Respectfully, Ed Knapp.
Members of the council, I am co-owner of the property at four hundred Ash Street and the owner of the property at one oh seven Forest. I am adamantly opposed to the following agenda item, introduction of Bill Number nineteen oh nine. If you accept this bill, nothing prevents Mr. Smith from developing a crematorium on his prospective property on Colorado Street. My property on Ash abuts the area where Mr. Smith would like to place his funeral home, mortuary. It is within the historic area where careful consideration has been given to architectural integrity and historic preservation. Mr. Smith's plan to develop a mortuary on Colorado Street contravenes that effort. My property at one oh seven Forest Lane around the corner from Colorado Street has an unimpeded view of Lake Mead. Mr. Smith's mortuary will devastate the property values in both areas. According to Trulia, an online real estate marketplace, living close to a funeral home, crematorium, or cemetery has a negative impact on a home's value. Homes can drop between ten point six and thirteen point six percent. In our neighborhood, that amounts to a significant loss. Please reject Mr. Smith's proposed amendment. Sincerely, Ann Langvin. I would like to reaffirm the concerns of my wife, Ann, or no, Laura Diamore. We recently purchased land up the street from fourteen oh four Colorado or in the process of building. Initially, we felt a mortuary might make a comparatively good neighbor, but the reality is that it sets a bad precedent for zoning that would ripple through our neighborhood and potentially affect locations throughout the entire city. It would be unfair to make an exemption for one business and not to expect other businesses to follow. These are the shady deals we look back on and wonder who was a friend of who. It's also unfair to the businesses that may have considered this property but passed because they respected the current zoning. I fail to see how this could be the only property suitable for Tyson's business, and for many reasons, disapprove of rezoning or issuing precedent-setting exemptions. Best regards, Rob Lepke. Please read this as an open letter to the council on November ninth. To our Boulder City Council, the Planning Commission recently voted six to one against altering Title XI, Chapters Three and Ten of the city codes to allow funeral homes, mortuaries as a conditional use in R-one single-family residential, and C-one neighborhood commercial zones. While I would not have a problem living next to the funeral home mortuary, it seems there are a majority of people who would. It is a business and should be located in a business zone. Rezoning or modifying a residential area to accommodate a business is setting a precedent that is not acceptable. That does not mean making already longstanding businesses move, however. If the cemetery is currently residential, common sense does dictate a change for that particular property, as it has clearly not been residential for a very long time. Also, I would like to respectfully remind the council you were voted into your position by a majority of voters, and those are the voices you need to hear and to represent as we have expectations that our majority voices will be acted upon accordingly. Special interests have no place in the room, only the good of the citizens who reside here. Thank you. Best regards, Jonna Mellor. Boulder City Council, there is no specific parcel number listed, just a global change to R-one and C-one. I find this to be concerning and confusing. Why is city council considering a change to zoning for one business? If Bill nineteen oh nine is voted to move forward and then approved, the entire town will open up all R-one and C-one for commercial. Approving one person's application that affects all of Boulder does not seem to be in the city's best interest. The current city council members' campaign slogan stated that they would vote for what is best for the city. I ask you to live up to your promises and do not move this bill forward. I have observed that Boulder City has many properties within the commercial zoning available for sale or lease with plenty of parking. We should encourage businesses to locate in the commercial areas. That is why we have zoning. Council members do not introduce nineteen oh nine or vote to approve. Sincerely, Sharon Newby, Boulder City resident.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing me to comment on Bill nineteen oh nine. My name is Elizabeth Powell. I live at four one seven Birch Street in the historic district close to the property in question for the proposed zoning change. As much as I appreciate Mr. Smith's need for more room for his important business, I do not believe it is in the city's interest to rezone R-one or C-one zoning just to suit a single business owner in town. It appears to me that it is Mr. Smith's responsibility to find a place for his business that is suitable and zoned for his business. It is It is not the city's responsibility to change zoning to accommodate him. Nor does it seem reasonable to change zoning that might allow other businesses to move into a residential zone. It is apparently well-known that mortuaries in residential areas decrease property values in those areas. I understand that Mr. Smith does not feel that a place on an industrial road is suitable for his business because it is not suitable for funerals. Why not? Cannot Mr. Smith build a beautiful garden or beautiful auditorium near his mortuary that would be suitable and a comfort for grieving families? I remember when my parents died, that the funeral home, which was quite away from the town center, had a lovely auditorium and garden in which they allowed memorials to be held. If he wanted to honor our loved ones, we did not ask how far out of town it was or how nice it was. We went and we paid our respects. Therefore, I do not believe that the argument that a place on an industrial road or other place out of the historic district and properly zoned for this business is unsuitable. I do not see the need to change zoning for this business. It is not the city's responsibility to give Mr. Smith what he wants for his business and not to any other business in town that might want to relocate to a residential area. I see no need for this zoning change, nor do I think it benefits Boulder City nor the historic district in which I live, neither now for Mr. Smith nor in the future. Thank you.
The next comment is from Whitney Winlow. Hi, I am opposed to putting the crematorium in town. Thank you for your time. Final public comment is from Boulder City resident Eileen Wilkinson. In regards to item number three on the agenda, introduction of Bill Number 1909, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada to allow funeral homes, mortuaries as a conditional use in R1 single-family residential and C1 neighborhood commercial zones. I am opposed to this ordinance. Funeral homes, mortuaries should not be allowed in residential areas and neighborhoods. It would not benefit these areas and would cause a negative impact to the areas and their property values.
Thank you. We'll give one last opportunity for anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. One last opportunity also, anyone here in chambers who has not spoken that wishes to do so? All right, we will close the public comment period. Move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes. I just wanted to make mention that if Bill Number 1909 is introduced, it would not be able to be considered at the first meeting in December. It would actually miss the deadline.
Thank you.
No other changes.
And Michael O. is our substitute city attorney. Any changes, sir?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
I have no changes.
Thank you. Council members, any changes for the agenda, regular agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We'll move to the consent agenda. Again, any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Council members, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's also unanimous. That brings us then to item number three, introduction of Bill Number 1909. And again, just for the benefit of those what Madam City Clerk had referred to, anytime that a bill is introduced, it starts a 30-day window of time for that bill to be heard. I just want to make that clarification regarding that matter. Anyone wishing to make a motion on item number three?
I'll move to introduce Bill 1909 and waive the reading without title.
Bill Number 1909, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada to amend Title 11, Chapters 3 and 10 of the city code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries as a conditional use in the R1 single-family residential and C1 neighborhood commercial zones. AM 21-356. This bill will be considered at the November 23rd, 2021 regular meeting.
Thank you. Item number four, for possible action, discussion and staff directive regarding additional removal of projects from the draft capital improvement plan. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Tonight, we have our Public Works Director, Keegan Littrell. He's going to be going through each project, project by project. And this is a time to get a little bit more feedback from the council members and go through the projects a little more in depth. So I'll go ahead and turn this over to Keegan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Littrell, Public Works Director, for the record. As the City Manager just mentioned that, sorry, I'm trying to... That's what that meant. As City Manager just mentioned, I'd like to go through each of the projects in a little bit of detail. I'm not going to explain all the nuts and bolts on it, but highlight each of the projects. Happy to break it down per department for questions, or we can wait till the end. You guys let me know how you want to do it and we can do it that way. But yeah, we're ultimately looking for feedback on projects that you don't feel that need to be done or projects that you've thought of that we don't have on the list. Looking forward to some feedback. So the capital improvement plan is a multi-year planning document used by the city to identify capital improvement projects and coordinate the financing and timing of the projects. CIP funding is annually appropriated, coinciding with the city budget process. We, as you guys know, but for the public's reference, we try to take care of the CIP budget in the fall, just to make operating and maintenance budget easier to proceed with in the spring, but ultimately it is formally adopted with the whole budget. A capital project is defined as a new replacement or improvements of infrastructure or vehicles that has a minimum life expectancy of five years and a minimum of $25,000. General fund monies are used from the undecided fund balance or the reserve. We're required to have 16.67% in that fund balance. That must be maintained. And then utility project budgets must match. Or they're adjusted to match, sorry. So we have some sustainable funding that has been approved. Capital Improvement Fund Number 1 allocates $1 million a year for city facilities and infrastructure. That's ongoing. Number 2 is $500,000 a year for seven years for the utility infrastructure that expires in '22. And then also, number 3 is for Track 349, Storybrooke Estates. And that is the final year for that one. And then number 4 is for the Track 350 that we'll be discussing at the end of the month. Seeing if we're going to move forward on that. But 90% of those funds we get from that sale will go to the pool and 10% is for public safety. So we do have a number of general fund sources that are not general fund. A number of funding sources that are not general fund. Mixing up my words. But as you can see there, we have the airport fund, we have a cemetery fund, the court assessment fund. I don't need to read through them all, but FAA is a big one that's helped us out a lot. And then we have the surcharges for the golf course, RDA, of course. And then two other big contributors are the flood control and Regional Transportation Commission. And then we also have the four enterprise funds, electric, water, sewer, and the landfill. So this sheet here is showing you the five-year plan. Where the money's coming from, or these are the projects for each of the departments and then broken down per fund. And then on the next one, this is showing you just the request for fiscal year '23. And then the funding sources. The funding sources, so these numbers should closely match, should match up with the other ones, but these ones are broken out more. You'll see the top two, the airport fund and FAA. That'll match with what we had for the airport for the two previous slides. Like I said, RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, $7 million. The general fund is just 7% of what the request is for the next five years. This is the funding source for the next year. Again, as you can see, Regional Transportation Commission is one of the larger ones. General fund is the 4.169 million. That's something I would like to discuss a little bit further on in the presentation. Typically, we move about $3 million into the capital improvement or from the general fund into the capital improvement fund. Most of the time, we match up very closely with that $3 million. But like I said, I'll get into that a little bit more further on down. But the rest of it is just showing the other funding sources, the CIP, 3 tracks, 349. We got another $2 million coming from there. And then another one is the pool funds. So broken down by department, I do want to mention that this, we started using new software this year. I mentioned it in the workshop, or Carol mentioned it in the workshop. We got a program called ClearGov where it's more of an online program instead of having to hand calculate and create our own spreadsheets and everybody submitting their request on paper. Now we can do it all digitally. You can eventually, and hopefully in the near future, we'll have a public-facing portal on ClearGov. So the public can go on, they'll be able to view all these projects, what the funding sources are, how much the project costs. It'll have all the details there. We're still working through some of the reporting on it. I know you guys are probably accustomed to seeing all five years on one 11-by-17 spreadsheet listing all the funding sources. We haven't quite figured that out in the reporting of ClearGov, but we are working with them to see if we can get that figured out. But all the information's still in here. It's just in different places. So it's, I know change is hard sometimes, but we're working to make sure it's the easiest for the public and you guys to understand. So for the projects, first one on there is the air traffic control tower. This is the design for that project, or not the design, construction for that project, 4.5 million. And then the beacon and high mast is construction for $630,000. You'll see at the bottom, we added the funding sources for that. FAA is paying for about 94% of those projects, and then the airport fund is 6% at $321,000. For public works streets, we have our annual crack and slurry seal project, the neighborhood rehabilitation for just shy of a million dollars. And then the arterial reconstruction, that's our annual reconstruction project. We're aiming at doing Bermuda dunes in some of the neighboring streets down there. That's the next one coming up on our list. Coinciding with that, I'll get to it on the water sheet, but we have a water project that we want to come in, do right before that and be able to save some money that way. And then we have the, I should mention that these ones here are all coming from RTC. RTC is funding all of that. You'll see the total on the next sheet. We have our pedestrian safety upgrades. That's handicap ramps, crosswalks, the rapid flashing beacons that you guys see. Our city streets crews do a lot of that work in-house. Sometimes they have to hire a contractor to help them with some of the work, but they try to do as much as possible to stretch those dollars. And then our ADA upgrades that kind of coincides with the pedestrian safety. Also doing handicap ramps. The pedestrian, backing up the pedestrian safety also contributes to some of our streetlights. And I know we're working on a new ordinance for that, so we're holding off on switching out a bunch of the streetlights before we know exactly what direction we're going. And then the only one on this list that is not RTC is the streetscape rehabilitation. That's kind of in your medians and your boulevards, cleaning up an area if it ever pops up that we need something that we need to focus on. But you'll see there that we got $3.2 million from RTC and then the $50,000 from general fund. For public works, we have the parking lot renovations. These are city-owned, so this would be coming from the general fund. This does not come from RTC. They only contribute money for items that are in the public right of way. We haven't identified a specific parking lot for this money, but we know there's a number of them that are going to need attention here in the real near future. Most likely, we'd piggyback off of one of our other slurry projects and then we'd just have to figure out the funding of RTC versus general fund, which shouldn't be a problem. Avenue I storm drain, that's one of the regional flood control projects. This $475,000 would be just for design and then next year you would see the construction dollars coming forward. And then the Wells Road levy lining, that's also a flood control project. That's just the design and then construction following that up. The city shops, facilities renovation and expansion. We've been doing a number of projects over there, trying to fit the needs of the staff over there. We'd like to continue doing some projects over there. So that's what that request is for. And then city hall parking lot renovation. I know we talked about that briefly in our workshop. Currently, right now, there is not a single spot out there that meets ADA. That's where this project stemmed from, is actually from the remodel of the council chambers. And then it kind of snowballed from the ADA going out the back door and down the ramp. We need to upgrade that. And then when we got to the parking lot, we quickly found out that, yeah, they might be labeled as handicap parking, but they don't meet ADA. So that would be taken care of with those funds. It would also actually make the parking stalls the proper width and depth. Right now, they're, I think, three or four feet shy. If you've got a smaller compact car, it's no problem, but if you've got a bigger truck, you'll quickly realize that you're hanging out into the roadway. And then we have city hall improvements. This is aimed at upgrading or improving any of the more public-used areas. The restroom might be one of them. Possibly the break room. We're trying to identify some areas that would improve city hall for the employees, but also for the public. And then to go with the parking lot improvements, I know, Mayor, you expressed interest in providing shade and solar with some historic appearance of the shade structures. This is our estimate for providing that for outside on city hall. And then the last one on this list is turf reduction at city facilities. Water conservation is a huge thing. We've talked about it multiple times in past meetings. So we wanted to start with $250,000. We're currently working on a master plan on areas that can remove turf without causing adverse issues. We just don't have that master plan done yet, so we know that this will get us started and going in the right direction. And then also one for the, the golf courses, same thing, working on a master plan, making sure that we're going to do it right, and get the rebate from Southern Nevada Water Authority, but ultimately, make it better for everybody and use less water. You'll see on the breakdown here, the request for Public Works is about 2.5, 500,000 is coming from the flood control district, the one point, almost 1.4 is coming from the general fund, and then we have other items there, the, the solar project, the 184,000, we'd like to use that on the, the shade structures outside, so that would help offset some of that cost. For Parks and Rec, Whalen Field, the outfield is getting to be in pretty poor shape, it's been a while since any works been down out there, they want to redo some of the grass and the irrigation out there to, partly to improve, improve water resources and, and make it so that the grass is easier to play on. And then park irrigation replacement, no specific parks are identified here, but it would just be going through, our landscape division is continuing to do water audits, doing their own due diligence on how we can improve our water use, so that would be used for that. And then park improvements is similar to the park irrigation, no specific park named out, but it would, would be for shade structures, any playground equipment, painting of buildings, stuff of that nature. And then the ABC Park Building and Grounds renovation, just upkeep and maintenance, again, painting buildings and improving it, could possibly use some plumbing and electrical, as we all know, those buildings are, are fairly old out there. And then the last one for Parks and Rec would be the swimming pool recreation project design. We had been talking about, we've got a, quite a bit of money, or thermometer's still over there, quite a bit of money, started a crew in there, we believe with the sale of Track 350, that, that would kind of be the trigger point, that we feel that we're, we've got enough money, or close to enough money, that we should be able to start the design, knowing the design's probably going to take us, by the time we procure a designer and actually do design, it might be 18 to 24 months. And then if you're looking at the five-year plan, you'll see that construction, the estimate for construction's in there, two years out. So you'll see the total there, 3.1 million, and then the different funding sources that are associated with it. For the golf course, there's a request for a, a new course restroom. This is for Boulder Creek, sorry, and then the Boulder Creek cart lease to own, this would be year two for the, the cart leases out there. Golf course improvements, nothing specifically spelled out yet, but in our golf course meetings, there's a number of projects that need to be done out there, we feel that this would sufficiently help out with that. And then the equipment lease to own. Okay, that's year one for the equipment lease, and then you'll see the breakdown, 140,000 coming from the surcharge, CIP one, and then general fund. For the municipal golf course, we have the cottonwood tree removal, that's part of our park master plan, or the golf course master plan that we're working on for the turf removal, we're looking at the, the cottonwood trees also to see what the best way to remove those, because it's starting to damage walls, it's causing quite a few issues out there with the, the root system. And then another golf course, or course improvements, similar to Boulder Creek, it would just be improvements on the course that have been expressed to us in our meetings. And then we have the equipment lease to own, similar to Boulder Creek, and then for the golf cart lease to own, this would be for year one, but Mr. Hall, Parks and Rec Director, will be coming at the next meeting with some great information, at least I feel it's great. We anticipated that the total contract for the, the cart lease was going to be about 1.1 million dollars. Supposedly, there is a contract out of Texas that we'll be able to piggyback off of, as long as we, I believe it's March or April, if we act before that time, we'll be able to save about 400,000 by piggybacking off that contract, so Roger will come forward with more information on that in the, at the next meeting. And again, you see the breakdown, the surcharge, CIP and general fund for those projects. Police, police, the first one, the security camera and electronic door, that's a continuation from previous years, last year, it was tied to the sale of Track 350, so of course, nothing happened but that, but they did have 150,000 from the previous year. I know that they're working on an overall plan, because that has been a concern, making sure that we know exactly what we want to do before we move forward, but there are some other improvements with access control that we can, they have been moving forward on, that we just know stuff's getting faulty, but they are working on an overall plan. And then animal control, the crest for that, they've been having quite a few security issues up there, people either climbing the, the back wall, even though we have installed more fencing on it, people are still climbing over it, there's been times that the animal control opened up the back door and there's somebody standing right there, we're guessing they're trying to get in to either charge a phone or cool off, we're not, not sure, but, so they would like to install some security fencing around there, and then that'd also be a place to store the mobile command vehicle, right now, they're renting a place to store that. And then also, police station covered parking, we would like to kind of continue the theme from, if we do the covered parking here in front of city hall, continue the theme down there. It's probably a little more vital for them to have their covered parking, because they're protecting the, the city vehicles and all the, the equipment that's in there, so that's where that request came from. And then a police station remodel, that request is more aimed for ADA and safety. I know when you first come in the, into the lobby, you have to badge in both sides, there's no way to transport people from side to side without badging in one side and badging another, so it'd add a little partition wall, and also for the dispatchers, they're there and they have the, the walk-up window right in the dispatchers, and I think they have it covered up, but still, it can be a distraction if someone's pounding on the window or whatever, they need to be focused, so we'd like to relocate them in the building. Make their job a little bit more efficient and a little easier, so that's what that request is, and all of that money would be coming from general fund. Fire, this is what I was talking about earlier, about for the Track 350, they would like to build a training facility, I know there's been issues with, there's partner agencies they can train with, but my understanding is they have to do it all on overtime, whether they're going to go down to our training facility down in the solar fields, or to work with Henderson, they're too far away to be able to come back if there is a call, so if there's a training facility, then they would be able to be training, and then if there's a call, they can just go out. But the way this ties to Track 350 is 10% of that is going to public safety, so that money would, that 1.1 would go, would come from the sale of Track 350. So if Track 350 doesn't move forward, then the training facility wouldn't move forward. So that's why the, the general fund request was higher than the normal $3 million that's transferred. Before I jump into the utilities, I do want to mention that we've been working very closely with the UAC, the UAC is going to put together a report with their recommendations, what they would like to see done, and we're hoping to get that accomplished by the first meeting in December, so as soon as that's done, either the Chair, Mr. Carr, or myself, we haven't just talked about who would be presenting it, but a report would be coming forward with their recommendations. But I can run through the, these projects so far, there's, most likely, there's going to be tweaks before it comes forward with their report. One other thing to mention is, we're trying to work with the, that Raftellus rate study, finances, since they just finished their CAFR, they're putting all the numbers into that spreadsheet, and once that's in, then we can put all the utility projects in and see what the cash flow is going to do. If the cash flow works out in our favor, we would like to try to pre-purchase transformers for three of the substations, or at least start with one, they're, they're quite expensive, but we know costs are going up 10 to 20% a year, so if we were able to pre-purchase them, we would be able to save some money, but that'll be included in the UAC report when they give you their recommendations. But we do, Substation 3 and Substation 4 need to be rebuilt, that's where, there's two transformers per, per substation, so those are just the costs of, the estimated costs of construction, that doesn't even include what the transformers cost. We did receive a, an estimate here recently that it was 800,000 plus or minus 10% from one company, and then another company said about 800,000, but then there was another 300,000 that they were going to tack on top of it, so we're doing our research to try to narrow down exactly what that number's going to cost. San Felipe to Mendota, that project is most likely going to be 100% complete before we get to FY '23, the reason that there's 100,000 in there is just in case there's any unforeseen's that come up to, to finish out that project. And then Substation 5 is another one that's going to need two more transformers, so if we can purchase them early, it will definitely help. And then Substation 1 to Substation 4 feeder ties, and Substation 2 to Substation 3 feeder ties, very similar projects, that's continuing to upgrade the 4 KV to 12 KV system, I know we've talked about it in the past, 4 KV is a very old system, it's hard to find parts for, so that's why we're converting everything to 12 KV, so that's what both of these projects would do, is continue that conversion. So you'll see here, the 7 million total, 5.7 coming from the electric fund, and then the CIP, that was the Track 349. Oh, I do want to mention, mention, we've talked at the UAC, we just haven't had it in here, but we've replaced all of the residential meters, we just haven't got to the commercial meters, so there'll be a request for 225,000 for next year, and 225,000 for fiscal year 24 to upgrade all of the commercial meters. For water, yeah, this is similar to some of the other projects, rebuild pressure-reducing valves, we have a number of them around town with our elevation changes, the money's in here to, we know of some that are going bad, but we didn't want to specify exactly one, because with my luck, that one would be fine, and this one would go out, and then we'd be back with another request to transfer the funds, so we left that kind of as a blanket, just to repair the ones that are going out. Copper service replacements, that's an ongoing project, we have 600,000 in this current fiscal year, and we have 600,000 for the next several years to replace the copper services. Happy to say that we finished and expended all the funds from FY '21, FY '22, we've bid out the first project, and we'll get started with that pretty soon, and we'll be starting the second project, the bid package with that, very quickly. And they replace eight-inch butterfly valves, similar to the pressure-reducing valves, we have a number of them that need to be replaced, or new ones to be installed, there's plenty of areas in town that these are 50-plus years old, our guys go out there to try to turn the water off if there's a leak and they can't even turn the valve, so we've, that'll be an ongoing project as well. The air release valve and backflow replacement, similar to the previous two I spoke about, there's a number of them that we need to work on, this, I know at the beginning, I said it has to be 25,000 be CIP, this is just the first year of the funding, total project is 60,000 to, to do this one. And then the project that went along with the street reconstruction that I mentioned is, we're calling it Golf Course Estates, this would be for the water services down there, believe there's around, roughly 90 water services that we've accomplished, and replacing all the valves, we're currently checking to see how many there are that we need to replace, our guys are going out there and trying to exercise them, see if they close or open. So this would be above and beyond the, the normal water service request that was on the previous page, and so that, what we would hope to do is July 1, be able to start this project, go out, and it would save us between 1,000 and 2,000 per service, because the contractor wouldn't have to pay back the asphalt, he'd just put temporary asphalt in there, and then we'd come right behind it with our RTC project and be able to fix all of the asphalt that way, so it was just a, a good idea to try to save some money.
I'm not clear on where this is located, what you're referring to, Golf Course Estates?
It'd be Bermuda Dunes, trying to remember some of the other names.
Now I know what you're referring to.
Some of the streets are down on, on the south and then on the, on the west side.
Pebble Beach and...
Yes.
Named after golf courses.
For wastewater, we have a number of our manholes that are becoming deteriorated, this 360,000 would be the beginning stages of rehabbing those, I did a similar project in my previous life, and there's a lot of different companies out there that do different things, we're looking into them to see what's going to be the best for our community, but those manholes with all the gases and the odors in there, they tend to start crumbling, and then if that happens, then we have an even bigger problem, so this would get our project started with rehabbing the manholes. Lift Station 1, that should be pleasing to, a lot of people seeing that one, that's where a lot of our odors are coming from over the hill, we get several complaints on that, our guys have been trying to work on different chemicals to try to knock down the odors, we just haven't been very successful, but this Lift Station 1 improvements would take care of that. And then down at the treatment plant, rehabbing the chlorine contact chamber, we use a number of chemicals down at the treatment plant to process the, the fluid that's coming in there, so this would help out with that. And then concrete-lined aeration basin, again, at the treatment plant, we have, I believe we have 12 basins down there, this would be able to rehab four of them. Lift Station 3 improvements, this would just be the beginning part of that project, there would be a request for 180,000 in fiscal year 24. And then rehabilitate the 18-inch sewer, that's similar to the manholes. There's a number of lines in town that are 50-plus years old, we didn't want to designate one line for this project, we just kind of left it open, so we can repair what needs to be repaired. And then the last one for wastewater is adding a, a shower and a restroom to the treatment plant, currently, right now, if one of the employees gets sewage on them, they try to use a garden hose or whatever, but then we, ultimately, we have to send them home, we don't, we don't have a shower for them to use, so it's a, a safety reason that we'd like to add that down there, just so they have a place to clean up if an accident ever does happen. So do we want to, do questions, or you want me to, I only have like a couple more slides?
Why don't you go ahead and finish those?
So, of course, the next step is asking for tentative adoption, we believe, well, I'm not sure we're going to come back in November, we'll most likely come back in December, because I know there's some other special meetings, workshops coming up, and then also anticipation of the UAC meeting again, and hopefully being able to finalize their report. If we're not able to bring the report back in time, I would ask you for tentative approval, as long as you guys are all comfortable with everything, for just the general fund side of it, and leave the utilities until you guys are able to see the report from the UAC, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we, when we come to it. And then after tentative approval, then we move forward with the, the normal budget process, that being adopted in the, in May, and being submitted to the state by June 1st. And then we do have our email, if anybody from the public has any questions, you can email CIP@BCNV.org, we've received a couple of questions over the last year since we created that email, but not very many, but I would just like to let everybody know that it's there, and we monitor it on a daily basis, so I, I have it on my phone, and of course, in my office, Carol monitors it, I believe Shannon Reiman monitors that as well, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bridges?
Sure, I was going to defer and down the line, but sure, I've got a number of questions, and some are specific, and some are more general. Okay, I'm, these numbers are staggering, some of them, and I'm trying to, one of my questions is going to be about specific issues, okay? That had been requested, that I would like, how do we get those on? And secondly, I want to see if there's, can you explain to me? Okay, I know we've already approved the golf carts, for example, and though they're budgeted in, even though, so we've got items on here that have already been approved, and they're just simply budgeted into this. Now, you are also talking about adding the second golf course as a, also to purchase on the same timeframe, because of the deal that we get the $400,000 savings?
I believe the savings that Mr. Hall was telling me about was just for the municipal golf course, because we haven't signed a contract with anybody. That would be the first year of that contract. The one for Boulder Creek, this would be the approval for year two, so we're already in contract with them.
Oh, okay, so this is for year two of an existing contract?
Correct, for Boulder Creek.
For Boulder Creek, and this would be that cost for this, that year?
Correct.
Got it, okay. I'm, now I'm going to ask the specific ones. Lift Station 1, 3, and 4, and the chlorine item, are those going to help with the smell?
Yes. The chlorine contact chamber, the only way it's going to improve the smell is if you're all the way down by the treatment plant. Most likely, any smells that are coming off the treatment plant are dissipated by the time they make it up to the residential area.
Now what about the lift stations?
Lift stations, yes, of course.
Okay, promise?
Promise.
Okay. I am going to ask for something to be added for Parks and Rec. I have been, it's been presented to me that we have some issues at the community gardens, and they involve, some of them, security of the individual people's gardens that they're taking care of. And is there a way to add camera, or lights, or some sort of item in that area to discourage anybody from coming in and disturbing other people's gardens?
Yeah, we can definitely look into that. We do have a security committee that, I can bring that up in our next meeting to look into that. There's a possibility that we would be able to address that with the current funding, but if you want to request to get a project added, just in case we can't do it through the security committee, we'd be happy to look into it either way.
Okay, I would really like you to do that, please. Now, in terms of playground equipment, when I was at, when we had a physical National League of Cities conference, there were a number of companies that were showing us accessible playground equipment, multi-generational. I know the items right across the street from my house over here are very ancient, and a sandbox that serves no purpose, and playground equipment that is not suitable for anybody who has any other kind of challenges other than just being a child. So is there a way to look into that and see whether or not we can accommodate more of our residents in our playgrounds?
Definitely.
Okay, and will any of this be covered by ARP? I know that it's not included into the budget numbers, but how does that fit into this?
My understanding of the ARP funds, because the city didn't lose revenue during COVID, that we're restricted to spending that money on water and wastewater projects.
Okay.
But I, I'm definitely not the right person to ask about exactly how they're supposed to be spent. That's just what my understanding and what I've been told.
Okay, so water and wastewater. So what I notice is not on here is any, anything having to do with improvements on the wastewater plant, especially those that might give us an opportunity to get that double-treated effluent into our golf courses and not have much of it evaporating into the atmosphere.
Yep. The city manager and I are setting up meetings with SNWA to further discuss that possibility. I know it's on the table that they would like to partner with us to be able to treat the effluent to a higher quality, so we can use it on golf courses or parks or...
So how would that fit in for this process?
The way I feel about it is, I'd like to get further along with SNWA to make sure that's more of a firm deal. And then if it's, if the timing's right, then we'd come back during the normal CIP request time, or if it comes up quicker or later, then we'd just come to you guys with a request.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I just, just to cover the actual CIP packet itself, I'm very impressed with the way that it's presented. It's very clear and concise, it's easy to understand, which I think is very important for, not only for us to make sure we're making informed decisions, but also for the public's aspect as well, so that they can be informed on the things that we're actually discussing. It's good to hear that we're still looking to continue to improve it. Obviously, there was the comment about, you know, making sure, you know, seeing which years we're in as we work on this, which can get confusing, because sometimes, you know, the project that, you know, brings up a concern isn't until 2025, but that kind of brings it up, highlights it, and then when you see that, it, you know, so I understand where that confusion can come in, but it's good to hear that we're working on that. To follow up with the, I did bring up an issue, a concern of mine regarding Taxiway Echo at the last workshop meeting, just for the public's information. I did meet with Marissa Do, the airport manager, and had a good conversation with her. I do not feel, you know, after getting a better understanding of what that project is, that that project would increase capacity at the airport, which I do know is a big concern for many residents here. I do think there are projects on that airport master plan that we can look at. That's not what we're discussing here tonight, but of the items for the airport on the CIP five-year plan, I'm comfortable with moving forward on those. One of the questions I have, and I'm kind of just going to use landscaping as an example, but I think it really applies to everything. You know, you talked about the fact that we have water audits, that, you know, we've got the turf removal that's mandated by the state coming up. Obviously, we need to be really water-conscious. We have each of these projects, landscaping needs at the parks, irrigation needs, tree removal at the golf courses, turf removal, all of those different things, and they're all their own individual projects under different departments, but in the end, they're one big picture about what we're looking at. So how do we make sure that, what is that process that you guys use to ensure that, you know, we're not digging up the ground at the beginning of the year, and then we're going back and digging up the ground at the end of the year? And obviously, that can apply to just about everything we're doing here, so...
Yeah, so what I envision, and what we're currently working on, is an overall master plan, the golf course being separate, but an overall master plan. In speaking with the city manager, I think it would be a good idea of us to have a public workshop, or some sort of meeting where we can present this to the public. I know we've received a few emails concerned with us just going out and ripping out the whole park. That's not our vision. We're looking at grass that's either on a steep slope, that's of course not used for erosion, but just on a steep slope that nobody's really playing on. That's the sort of stuff we're looking at, but we're putting, compiling that on a master plan. We'll have a big map showing the areas that we're considering, but then we can present that to the public, and also present that to council of our ideas of moving forward. And then similarly, for the municipal golf course, we actually had a meeting with, he's retired now, but he used to design golf courses, I believe. He's the one that designed the Boulder Creek Golf Course, so he's looking into the municipal course. He did it a number of years ago, I believe, back in 2003, and kind of came up with some conceptual ideas of where we could get away with removing turf without lessening the experience for the golfers, and ultimately getting that turf rebate using less water. So it's, the master plans is the, what I'm getting to, is we're coming up with a full plan, but we'll incorporate these ones that the landscape division is working on, changing out meters and valves into that master plan. We just know that there's some low-hanging fruit that we can go grab right now to try to improve everything.
And with those water audits, just from my, you know, understanding, you know, I guess that's looking at areas in which we can improve our water usage, and so things like, you know, I know it's not appropriate everywhere, but things like, you know, underground, I think they call them inline emitters, like Netafem, you know, where those are appropriate to be used as opposed to, you know, the above-ground, you know, drip lines or whatever, especially when we're talking about removing turf, you know, you have to then consider the water that needs to be used for the trees, that we do still need to provide shade in the hot summer. So is that part of that whole process, so that, you know, when we, and there is the opportunity to look at the irrigation, that we're not just replacing in kind, but perhaps considering if it's appropriate, converting that irrigation system?
That's definitely what we're going to be looking into. I know that's a major concern when we're meeting with the golf course, and then meeting with the landscape team, is you go out and rip out all the grass around this tree, and now it's not going to get any water. So we got to look at how we can improve that, like you were just saying.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate the presentation.
Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you, I asked mine at the workshop.
Thank you. I have a couple of things, you know, again, I think we are making a lot of progress with the CIP format, but I do see something that I believe is critical that's missing and continues to be missing, and that is showing what funds are available within the general fund, or the utility fund, or the airport fund, so that when there's a project that's being proposed, what impact is that going to have on what is available within that particular fund? You know, it's great that these things are getting listed out, and on each item, that it's being shown which of the funds the proposal is being made for, but we never get an overall picture. The other thing that I would like to see is something where we get, how much money has come in to regenerate that fund, say, over the past three years, so that, again, we can try and predict, well, if this amount came in the last three years, we'd be fairly comfortable saying that that amount's probably going to come in over the next three years. So we would know if we're spending more, like I look at the electric fund, and just adding up some of those projects, I think it's like $17 million. Well, how much money's in there? You know, are we writing bad checks, or how does that work? So I would like to see an accounting of how those funds are currently, what the situation is currently, what amount of money goes into those funds each year over, again, like I say, the past three or five years, so that we can try and predict, well, okay, we'll have some idea of how much money may be going into those funds in the future. And again, I think that would help the public understand, you know, I look at some of these things. Councilmember Adams pointed out, there are a number of landscaping things on there. Parks and Recreation has things spread all over the place, as far as work that they're proposing. I think those types of things need some coordination. That would be helpful, I believe, for myself and for the public. With regard to the airport, I renew my opposition to the control tower there. Councilmember Adams mentioned the master plan that was approved some time ago. People need to understand how the FAA works, and what that master plan was, was a proposal of the FAA to say, well, here's what we're going to do. And each step we go in that process, we become more and more bound by what the FAA is going to tell us to do in the future. So this bit about, well, we can, you know, apply the brakes, or pump the brakes whenever we want to, that's not how the FAA works. And this is a dangerous game being played with this community right now, as far as that master plan for that airport, and what people can expect as far as increasing traffic, larger aircraft, jet aircraft. It's a real hazard for this community. The Avenue I storm drain system, why is that being called Avenue I when the problem's over on Avenue G?
I'm not sure where the name came from. It's been in the regional flood control 10-year plan for a number of years, but I know it does, you and I have spoken about this on a couple of occasions, but yeah, it's intended to address everything down, coming down to the high school, and then what's going over to, what is that K that runs right next to it?
G.
G, okay, yeah.
It's still G.
I've only been here under three years, I'm still trying to figure out all the streets.
And, you know, fortunately, they're alphabetical.
I know.
Nobody knows where Avenue A is, so... But again, I just, you know, when we don't have that description, because the problem is Avenue G with the way the high school has constructed their parking lot, and the flow from California Street, it all funnels off into that little corner there onto Avenue G, and that, you know, continues to go right on downhill, past the middle school, and, you know, we're going to get a rain someday where that's going to be a problem.
Hopefully, it's in three years, and this will be fixed by then.
But then I also read on there, says, "Project includes replacement of existing storm drain and new storm drain from Avenue I to Avenue G via 7th Street to collect and convey runoff from the areas to Georgia Avenue Concrete Channel." I do know at the bottom of Avenue I, that's a cul-de-sac, and there is, you know, a major storm drain at the bottom of that cul-de-sac. We're not taking the Avenue G water and sending it over to Avenue I to create a problem on Avenue I.
Now, it will be coming from that Avenue I, but there'll be inlets to pick up the water on Avenue G, and ultimately get it down south of Adams.
Maybe we can visit on that one.
Okay.
The public workshops, you know, you have a couple of projects in there. When we first learned about the American Rescue Plan money, we thought, you know, maybe there's going to be something that we could do in a cohesive way. I know that all of that predates you, so it's not a reflection on any of the work you've done, but yeah, that's kind of grown over the years, and maybe not in the best coordinated manner. I would really like to see a more comprehensive, I mean, absolutely, that shower that is in here is absolutely necessary, but, you know, wherever we might be able to find some money, that area is certainly in need of some help.
Thank you.
And I think it would make our city crews more effective and efficient. You know, they've got some real problems moving equipment around, storing things, protecting things from the sun, all of those types of issues up there.
Yeah, you saw it when we took our tour with the city manager, electric division's the first one that comes to mind. They've got their little storage shop there, but then they're using this building to store more stuff, and then this building to store wire, and this building, it's, they're not efficient by doing that, and that's across all of our divisions. It's, they're spread out, they're maxed out over there, so I appreciate that.
Talk about the shade structures on parking lots. You know, one of the things that is in the bill, the infrastructure bill, are charging stations. There's a significant amount of money in there. I think that that's going to be a challenge for city staff to, and this is directed more to Mr. Tetter, you know, finding out what all these programs are that are out there. Anywhere we can use those funds would allow us to do something like with the public workshops, where, you know, we may be able to direct some of the other CIP money towards projects like that. So, you know, the bill's actually been signed into law, so we can actually read it now instead of hearing about what might be in it. And that also brings up the point about the water projects. Again, it does appear that the American Rescue Plan money, we may only be able to use for water, wastewater, and broadband. I know, Mr. Tetter, you've been looking into the broadband issue, we'll see what comes out of that. I know previously, Councilmember Bridges had advocated for... I know previously Councilmember Bridges had advocated for the retrieval line that SNWA was going to build. I think it's a lot better solution for Boulder City, which is why I proposed that, to reuse that effluent for irrigation water. I think that's something, you know, yes, we want help from SNWA. Our, our folks pay rates. I mean, when we purchase water, we're paying SNWA for that service. So this is certainly something that would benefit them as well. But we have received a significant amount of money through the American Rescue Plan. And again, finding out how that money can best be used. When we do, you know, you'd mentioned before about the architecture of those shade structures and, and, you know, trying to do something that doesn't make them appear out of place here. I'm not sure what you have in mind for the parking lots themselves, but I would ask that, you know, when these things are being designed, that we'd be very cognizant of the fact, this entire uptown area was laid out for the design and architecture of Boulder City. So each of these plazas has a place within that design. I, I think it's very important that we try and preserve that, you know, significant effort to preserve that.
I completely agree.
There's mentioned a few times of a Parks and Recreation Maintenance Program. You know, it refers to this project as part of that plan. Can we get a copy of whatever that plan is? I know you're not Parks and Rec, but.
I'll see if I can track it down for you.
One, one more hat free to wear. Another water project that does seem to have some need for some work to be done on it. And I hate using the term El Dorado Valley Pipeline because that gets used for what is probably better known as the Pipeline to Nowhere Project. But there is a pipeline that goes all the way down into El Dorado Valley. And from what I understand, there's a lot of pressure in that pipe because of the elevation change. And there are none of these pressure-reducing valves over like a thirteen-mile stretch of that.
Yeah, we've been discussing that in the UAC. There is some money in the current fiscal year for PRVs for that line. So we're going to be looking into that.
And again, with the guidelines for the Rescue Plan money, that certainly seems to be a water project, water-related project. There are references to new traffic signals being installed in a couple of places on projects?
Can you point me in the right direction?
I, I, I can.
I didn't say roundabouts.
We don't use the R-word. No one likes roundabouts. No one in Boulder City likes roundabouts. Page seventy-five, pedestrian safety upgrades, that's one of the mentions.
Yeah, that wouldn't be new traffic signals. The pedestrian safety is typically used for the, what we call a HAWK or the rapid flashing beacons for crosswalks for the kids or any, any of the walking public.
Okay, it's just, you know, within the description, it says pedestrian safety, but then it says traffic signals. And when I see traffic signals, I think red, yellow, green.
I believe that description, if I remember correctly, is how RTC has it worded when we go with our inter locales with them. So we use that same language that they've spelled out.
All right.
But yeah, I'm not, not planning on any new, new traffic signals for you.
Well, you know, I, I can remember when there were none and, and the first one was going to go in and everybody said, if they put that in, I'm leaving. Well, they put it in and nobody left, so I think we'd be okay if we had to put something in, but. The four KV to twelve KV conversion project, is there an estimated completion time on that?
For, I know the work, the, the support services contract with PAR that's been helping us out with that four KV conversion. I believe another year of that should handle a lot of that, but then we do have a number of other projects. Some of the, two of our six substations are four KV, so they'll be completely taken offline. Once we get that rerouted, we're not going to, this is another topic we've been talking about at the UAC. To be able to stretch the dollars further, we might leave some of those substations to be completely decommissioned. We might, we won't have any power running through them, but they'll sit there for a little bit until we get a bunch more projects completed. But I don't have an exact timeline on when it'll be completed. I'm hopeful in the next couple of years we'll be able to get everything converted to twelve KV.
The reason I ask, you know, initially that was going to be a four-year project, a million dollars a year and we're done and everything's great. Yeah, we're way over four million and now we're going past four years. Okay. Our streets in general, it's great, the amount of money that comes in from RTC. You know, when RTC was looking for funding sources, you know, the people of Clark County voted themselves a tax increase and that is what goes in to pay that. But I think that, you know, we've looked now at the RTC funding and said, well, that's it. That's all we can do for our streets. Our streets probably need more attention than what funding RTC can give us each year. So again, I believe that we need to look very hard at what we might be able to do beyond what the RTC is, is able to help us with each year.
Yeah, I agree with that. We've been working closely with GCW. They're the consultant that we've selected for our five-year plan in needing to ramp up, speed up our, the amount of projects we're doing. And it might come to that point in the near future where we're going to be requesting general fund dollars to supplement that.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it was done in the old-fashioned way was we actually fixed our own streets or actually more likely we didn't fix our own streets. But the streets are getting in, in very poor condition in some areas. And I, I get that we love to put, you know, millions of dollars into golf course improvements and all that. But there are real issues that with city infrastructure. You know, we can certainly look at the bills that are coming out of Congress to see if there's any assistance in there. RTC may get a boost in their funding and be able to fund additional projects. But we, we need to look at what the infrastructure of the town is before we start looking at, at other things. And, you know, I, I have a, a big question here, not question, but comment. As Councilmember Adams had said, we absolutely have to do something about our water consumption. And I know you all are working on several things with the landscaping. You know, January one, well, I'm not sure if it's January one, but sometime next year, we're going to take a ten percent reduction in our water usage. Is that correct?
They were proposing a, I thought they were saying ten, but it might've been a little bit higher than that. And I've got to work through some of the details of, was that from our allocated number or from our, our current usage? If it's from what was originally allocated to us, we're under that. But if it's a cut from what we're currently at, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do.
Well, and even if it is the allocation, you know, we can all sit here and say, well, they promised us this much water as we watch Lake Mead dry up to a little puddle and that's not going to happen anytime soon. So let, let's not, you know, be fearful of this. But we know it's dropped over a hundred and forty feet in the last several years. That's a whole bunch of water that's no longer there. So whatever we can do, and yes, I know that, you know, the Vegas Valley is planning on, you know, another forty-two thousand acres of development. Well, we need to do our part. And, and being thoughtful of that, I, I know you're, you're meeting with people, you're talking with them. You know, we don't want to do things that, yeah, we might save a little water, but all our trees die or something. Something that's not on this list, it certainly seems to be something that will come up, is the Bristol Cone Storm Drain Channel. If that is going to go forward with the sale of Track 350, something's going to have to be done about that. Is that correct? I mean, a, a project cannot go in on Track 350 unless a storm channel is built there.
That is correct. Well, a project could go in, but then part of it would get ripped out to have the storm drain going eventually.
Well, I'm just saying with the, the way the water and the land and all that is, it's just not feasible to build something there without having a storm drain channel.
It would most likely cause issues for the houses there downstream of them, yes.
Okay. So that, you know, that's something that I did not see on our current. But yes, we're supposed to discuss the potential sale of that land at the end of the month. Police dispatch, you had mentioned doing some work over at the police station. Mr. Tetter, I know we've talked before about a possible partnership with the federal government.
It's my understanding that they're still in discussion on that. But as soon as we have any firm offers of commitment on that, I'll, you'll be the first five to know.
Well, actually not the first five. You'll, you'll be ahead of us and probably Chief Shag. But we'll be somewhere in the top twenty.
Oh, yeah.
Again, I, I just mentioned it, you know, absolutely, I absolutely support the need for the dispatch center to have some improvements. But if we're doing that and then we're going to do something, you know, we're going to abandon it and do something else. I, I won't say it sounds like a government job, but I've heard that expression before. All right, that's all I have. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I do have one more. Thank you. This is very good. And I did want to make a comment regarding the meeting with Mrs. Swanson. And that is, I, I would like to make sure we keep in our front of our mind that there are a number of these overall projects, whether it's Parks and Rec or Public Works Streets, that we take into consideration, not only, and I've, I'm beginning to sound as redundant as some other things, and not only the compliance in terms of ADA, but the spirit of ADA. That, that we're including people who are, challenge people in, you know, whether it's hearing, seeing and wheelchairs, you know, are, are they able to make decisions to, whether it's use the playground or cross the street and, and feel included in, in Boulder City? And I, and I think that's, that's becoming more and more important.
I've made it a priority in, in talking to GCW when they are going through and, and doing their street projects that we look at all of the crosswalks, all of the handicap ramps to be included in those projects above and beyond projects that'll come up that we're discussing with Ms. Swanson.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, I don't believe we actually have a motion we need to make on this. People have expressed their thoughts, so.
Unless you want to give me tentative approval of the general fund?
I don't.
Okay. Just ask.
Thanks for asking, but.
Don't know until you ask.
Yep. Anyone who wants to give tentative approval now instead of later?
We'll come back after a few of the other workshops and meetings.
We'll be anxiously awaiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, sincerely appreciate what you and all the staff have been doing on this. It's much better. Carol Ellis, again, I, hats off to you, working with new software and doing all that kind of stuff. It's looking a lot better.
I'm very excited for when she's able to put the, the public portal up and then we'll make sure we broadcast that so people can go in and view it. It's, when you're, it looks great on paper here, but when you're looking at it on the computer, it's so much easier to read than, than it is here. So I'm excited for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, great progress. Thank you. All right, item number five for possible actions, matters pertaining to council rules of procedures. Madam City Clerk, did you want to explain this one?
Yes. So this item is two parts. So item five A is regarding your city council rules of procedures. Three-point-one regular council meeting states that your regular council meeting shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month with the exception of the second meeting in July and December being vacated. A change of any one regular meeting date may be made by a motion duly passed at a regular meeting to temporarily suspend the rules and change the date. The 2022 primary election is June fourteenth and the general election is November eighth. Both days are the same day as your regular council meetings. I have before you the June 2022 and November 2022 calendar informing you of alternate dates and dates the council chamber would not be available. It doesn't really leave a lot for determination and it would be my recommendation that the city council conduct its regular business on the Monday before its regular meeting on both June and November. Or you always have the ability to bring regular business to the special city council meeting to canvass the election results. That would be the following Thursday.
On the twenty-third?
Uh-huh.
And that's for June?
That's for June and then the special city council meeting to canvass the results in November is again, the following Thursday and that would be on the seventeenth. And keeping in mind, if you did move it to the Thursday, the very next week is another regular council meeting.
Yes, it would be like four days before the next meeting and actually only two business days later.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that, you know, looking at this, it's the only, the only real issue for me with having it on the Monday before is those are also the days we typically do our briefings, but that's just a small, a small thing compared to looking at all of the other potential options. I see those as being more problematic. So I guess I would be more in favor of having the, the Monday prior to the elections being our regular business. That's my thoughts, but I'm always open to other opinions.
Councilmember Bridges?
I, I concur. I, I would think that the Monday night before and then we could figure out a briefing the third, whether it's the Thursday before or, or however we could work out our briefing. So the thirteenth of June and the seventh of November.
Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I would just like to have it on the Monday also. I think it would work out better rather than trying to push two of them within four business days.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fox, any thoughts?
I agree the, the Monday, but looks like it would work best.
Thank you. I will make a motion then for temporary suspension of section three-point-one as authorized by section five-point-one of the city council's rules of procedure to change the date of the regularly scheduled meeting from the second Tuesday in June to the second Monday, June thirteenth, as well as the meeting in November, from November eighth to November seventh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Item B, Resolution seventy-three sixty-one, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item B is again, section three-point-one, regular council meetings.
Item B is again, Section 3.1, regular council meetings occur at 7:00 PM. The regular meeting times of the city council have not changed since the late 70s. In most recent years, a flexible work schedule has become an alternative to the traditional nine-to-five work week. We also have advanced technologies now such as live streaming meetings and it offers the public an opportunity to provide their comments by calling in during live meetings or to submit written public comments in advance of the meeting to have their voices heard without actually being present in the council chambers. So, we're requesting an earlier start time to provide greater access for the public to participate as some of our public hearings and general public comments have begun after 10:00 PM over the past few years. Just as a side note, the surrounding municipalities and Clark County meetings are conducted at 5:00 PM or earlier. The only other one that's 5:00 PM is Mesquite, all the other entities are during the day. And none of them have negatively affected public participation by having earlier start times. Should the council be supportive of this time change, staff would promote the information to the public and include it in our December utility mailer, social media, our website, and news release. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I, you know, I am hesitant about changing the time. It is kind of a tradition. But certainly there have been improvements in technology. You know, it used to be, well, you didn't want to start it too early because people hadn't gotten off of work. Well, people work a lot of different shifts now. Also, with the ability to livestream and call in, I know not everyone has that capability, but those capabilities have become fairly common now. I also see the burden it puts on city staff when we're here till midnight or later and then they have to come back in the next day at 7:00 in the morning to perform their day jobs. I think this is a good change. It's a compromise between what many of the other councils do, where they meet at 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM in the morning. This should still let most people, if they do wish to make public comment, to do that even if it may be by call-in. So, again, I would welcome the public if they have thoughts about this, where they don't think it's a good idea. The proposal here is not to start this until the January 11th meeting after the new year. We would still have time to consider changes. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I was the adamant no and the last time this was brought up. Since then, and as I said a number of meetings ago, the one committee that I belong to or that any member would belong to would be the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition that meets at 4:00 on this Tuesday. However, we are not meeting very frequently. It has become very clear that it has turning more and more of its responsibilities or what it's been asked to do to other commission. And I can call in at 4:00. I mean, there is somebody else who's doing that now and it seems like every, several meetings we're canceling the meeting before we have it. So, I have absolutely no problem now with the idea of changing it to 5:00.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, when former Councilwoman Folda brought this before us, you know, I was disappointed that we couldn't move the time a little bit earlier then, but I do think it was the appropriate call given, you know, the circumstances of the time. But I do think this would be actually a benefit for the public. I've heard from far more people that the meetings are too late. I can't, I can't be there till 10:00, I can't. We've had a number of those meetings, you know, so I think 5:00 is a very reasonable time, you know, especially in our, in our community. I think many people can make that. As has been said, there's plenty of other ways to participate now that weren't available, you know, just a year or two ago. So, I certainly am in favor of this and I think there is enough time to get people, you know, ready for that change over when it happens. So, yeah, I am in favor with moving it to 5:00.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I was a little hesitant at first when I saw the 5:00 start time. I thought it was a little early, but thinking about it and then thinking about city staff, how, yeah, they get stuck here until midnight or later sometimes. And then being here at 7:00 AM the next morning is not a great thing for them. So, yeah, I'm in favor of 5:00.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have a question or comments?
No, I just wanted to state that I too am in favor. I think it's beneficial in the long run for the public and for the staff. So, I'd like to see 5:00.
All right, thank you. I will then move for approval of Resolution 7361, repealing and replacing Resolution Number 7278, approving Amendment to Number 23, excuse me, Amendment Number 23 to the city council's rules of procedures. And I'm wishing to second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That vote is unanimous. Item number six for possible action, Resolution 7362, a resolution of the city council approving agreement with Northwind Consulting. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Michael Mays, our Community Development Director, will handle this item. And I did want to give you one side note on one thing that we're doing to increase the ability for the public to access our meeting materials more easily in the background. We are working with PrimeGov right now to implement a new agenda management software, which will allow residents to easier access to the agenda items, being able to click on the website to each item and also indexing the meeting recordings, which will allow them, instead of searching through a video, they can click on individual items. But that will take a six-month implementation process. So, I didn't want to just add that for you.
Thank you, and that will be really cool.
Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. In order for the city to accomplish the community's historic preservation goals, the city has sent out a RFP, Request for Proposals, to seek historic preservation professional services. Four firms responded to the RFP and Northwind Resource Consulting was selected as the most responsive and responsible vendor. The proposed five-year agreement provides for a not-to-exceed amount of $75,000 per year and would help the city in several ways. It would help maintain compliance with the city's CLG status, that's Local Certified Local Government Designation, through the State Historic Preservation Office. It would help us with the review of grant applications to ensure compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards related to preservation. And it would also help with working with property owners that are looking to remodel structures within our historic district so that we can provide them guidance early on in the process on improvements that would help to maintain the historic nature of those properties and help with their continued contributing to the historic district. Hiring a professional firm to help with the city's preservation efforts was one of the action items within the recently adopted historic preservation plan and was a part of the approved fiscal year '22 budget. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly think this is, this is the appropriate next step. I know when we've discussed this before and what the process was, I always foreseen us, you know, going to a contractor or outside contractor first to kind of start to help us as we, as we continue to work towards our historic preservation priorities. One question I have, obviously, this is a five-year contract we're looking at. The scope of their work is probably, those needs are, our needs are going to change as we move forward. What do you see being, you know, the most important assistance that they'll be providing the city in just in year one?
In year one, certainly with respect to helping with property owners and giving them guidance on how to maintain historically significant properties. One of the issues that's been raised with the Historic Preservation Committee is reevaluation of the city's design guidelines. And that's where the historic preservation consultant can work with the community on reevaluation of those guidelines. And then, obviously, with review of permits that are being proposed within the historic district and the understanding of how they meet those guidelines.
So, they would kind of serve as a first stop before anything else? So, there's a basis in historic preservation knowledge at the beginning of the request or the application or the concept before it begins to move forward?
That's the intent. Having that expertise will help us work with property owners so they can envision improvements that follow those guidelines.
And I think it's probably the most important thing we need right now, so... Yes, I am in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. You know, it had been previously proposed that we would have a full-time historic preservation officer. That, in my mind, was a stretch for a community of 16,000, even though we do have many assets here that have historic significance. This will come in well under what the cost of hiring a qualified preservation officer would. I think that this is a component that has really been lacking for our city is to have someone, and not just a person, but this is a consulting company where they can draw on different resources within their company. But a place where we get professional expertise from a certified individual who understands what needs to be done, what the laws are, what the guidelines are, be able to help the community understand what those types of things are about. Also, help our preservation committee. Having served on that committee, you know, trying to get things done, you know, it's not the easiest thing to do. And I think we have the ability now to hire someone that has the focus, and again, I keep saying a person, but a company, that can provide that level of expertise that we've been missing. With that, I will make a motion then to approve Resolution 7362.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mays, and now we'll go to item number seven. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight is the final request on my moving expenses per my employment agreement. On the October 12th meeting, you authorized the first payment and since that reimbursement, I have incurred costs of $8,935.15. And as we discussed at the last meeting, due to the changes in the tax law, for the actual payment to net that amount, it would need to be made for $11,057.70. I've attached all of the receipt documentation and itemized listing in the packet and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I know I brought it up during the briefing. I just think in general, it's really important going forward that when we offer to pay expenses like that, that we include the fact that this is taxable income instead of having to worry about calculating it at the end, that it's, you know, if the tax rate is 28%, then we offer 28% over or something in that. Make sure that's clear in, at the beginning. No, I have no problem with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is in the contract. What was set in the contract was an upper limit. This is within that upper limit. As far as how we get there, the expenses certainly look to be in line. I would make a motion then to approve this payment for these expenses.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Tetter. That brings us to our last public comment period. Public comment during this period of the meeting can be on any item. There is a limit of five minutes for each speaker. As always, we request that you be civil and concise. We do still have a few folks here. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Smith?
Bruce Smith, 1340 Colorado Street. A lot of people showed up here for this, item three. People emailed in. Why wasn't it voted on, up or down? Mr. Fox, did you vote to delay it? Did, you made a suggestion to delay it for a month? Is that what happened?
We don't respond directly, but again, the process is to introduce a bill and then within 30 days, if the bill is introduced, it must be heard. So, that's what occurred tonight is that bill. Councilmember Fox introduced the bill and we have up to 30 days now or the process starts over.
I'm just saying, everybody was here. But I could see why you guys are going overtime late at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeShane?
I watched my left foot a little better this time. Judy DeShane, I just want, I'm glad we're going to have this North Winds oversight, is how I think of it, because I certainly do not want to see in any way, shape, or form what went on here a couple of months ago on that historic preservation money going to ruin a historic building where it doesn't even qualify anymore. So, I do not want to see that again and I certainly hope you guys bring that forward and address that and make some changes and tighten that rule up. That was just a travesty and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will go to anyone wishing to call in for the final public comment period. The phone number, 702-589-9629. This is the final public comment period for city council. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number, 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any comments that had been emailed prior to the meeting?
No comments received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for further for public comment, we will close the public comment period. Move to our last item, council reports. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have two. One is, as, as I always talk about, emergency aid has funding available for those who are dealing with an emergency with respect to rent assistance or utilities. Also a fully stacked pantry, fully stocked pantry. The other is RTC has a survey online right now in which constituents are asked to explore what they're interested in with respect to transportation and mobility valleywide. The website is onboard snv.com. It runs through January and there is going to be some form of award for night's tickets. But mostly it's about what is it you're interested in Boulder City or you know, throughout Southern Nevada in terms of transportation and mobility. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Nothing to report, but I hope everyone had a safe and happy Nevada day or as the rest of the country calls it, a happy Halloween.
There we go, thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. Just with Veterans Day coming up, just I wanted to thank those who currently serve or who have served our country and encourage those, if you've not had the opportunity, go out to the Veterans Cemetery on that day and give a personal thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to mention that on Veterans Day, there are a, a number of ways that people can say thank you to our veterans who have served and, and their families. At 9:00 AM on Thursday, there will be a, a drive-through parade at the Veterans Home. There will be similar parades at the Lakeview Terrace Assisted Living Facility. I believe that's at 11:00 PM. And then at 2:00 PM, there is one at the Homestead. There will also be a ceremony in Las Vegas at the State Office Building, the Sawyer Building. That I believe begins at 1:30 PM. It's a day that we say thank you to those who are still with us and who have provided service to our country. Earlier today, Mr. Tetter, myself, a couple of other members of city staff attended the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance Vision 2022 Conference. Lot of good information there, talking about the economic outlook for Southern Nevada. You know, there were a lot of numbers that were put up, a lot of optimism. And of course, the question comes up, what about water? Well, that's going to be a question. And certainly part of that answer was we need to reduce the amount we use for landscaping purposes because the amount that we use within our homes, you know, sinks, toilets, washing machines, that water is often able to be reused at least one more time. So that's going to be a big factor. But the news was very positive. They do think that they see a tremendous amount of diversification coming into the Las Vegas economy. There are big plans for manufacturing facilities. Tourism is certainly always going to be the, the economic engine of Clark County, but they're also looking at bringing in other jobs. I think that this year they've brought in over 8,500 jobs, I believe, or it was 5,800. But the average pay on those jobs was exceeded $28 an hour. So the hats off to the, that group, Global Economic Alliance. They've really been doing some good work in diversifying the, the economy for Clark County. I said at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we're heading into the colder months. If you have not received a vaccine yet, please consider doing so. You know, we can look over time. Last year at this time, we got into the holiday season and by the end of the year, we saw our largest spike ever of infections. Vaccines are free. You can get them at the hospital, at our pharmacies here in town. There'll be a clinic for the city on booster shots next week on the 15th. Appointments are required for that. Let, let's get this done. Let's get it over with. Thank you and we're adjourned.